Please rise, ladies and gentlemen. The 16 Sangguniang Panlalawigan is now convened for its 22nd regular session. The Honorable Vice Governor Adeline M. Angeles presiding.
The 22nd regular session of this Sangguniang Panlalawigan is now called to order. Requesting Honorable Buti Rosales to kindly lead the invocation to be followed by national anthem.
Dear the Father and the Son, the Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father, God Almighty, earnestly pray and hope for your guidance, wisdom today as we deliberate while in session. There are so many decisions to make today. Give us your spirit for our individual strength, both physical and mental, clear visions so that we may be able to deliver basic services in needs of our people. You said if we lack wisdom, all we need to do is ask you. We really need you to pour wisdom into our minds today. Thank you Lord for all the bounties. Our people are enjoying through divine providence, amen. In kapansan, Lord's presence.
Mr. Secretary kindly called the roll.
Honorable Mark Julius Picaballes, Honorable Aurelio J. Leva III, Honorable Antonio El Mangukang III, Honorable Bernardin Pobis Mercado, Honorable Mel Gabal R. N. Cabo, Honorable Mercedes Ariano, Honorable Dani Redd, Honorable Ismael Dipilim, Honorable Jose Neril El Mangol, Honorable Valdomero El Limpiada, Honorable Loren Narrosales. Madam Presiding Officer, with the eight members of the board present, we have the necessary quorum for this morning's session.
Let it be put on record also that Honorable Mark Julius Picaballes is on official business. The Presiding Officer advised him to attend the Peace and Order Council in consideration of the items that he needs to justify in the council meeting also today at 10 o'clock. So with eight members of the board present, the Chair declares the quorum and we can now proceed with the order of business. What is the pleasure of the Honorable Gentleman from Buak, our floor leader?
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer. Madam Presiding Officer, I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the preview session dated December 2, 2022, without prejudice to the manifestations of corrections, amendment, and clarification from the members of the board. I so move.
There is a motion from the floor leader. Is there any second to the motion as mentioned, duly seconded, any objection? The Chair hears none, we can proceed with... The motion is approved, we can proceed.
Inviting members of the board, Madam Presiding Officer, who have some corrections, clarifications, and amendments to the minutes.
Any corrections from the floor? The Chair hears none, what's the pleasure of the Gentleman from Buak?
Madam Presiding Officer, I move that we approve and adopt the minutes of the 20 first regular session dated December 2, 2022. I so move.
There is a motion from the floor for the adopt... From our floor leader for the adoption of the minutes of our session dated December 2, 2022. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved, the minutes of our December 2, 2022 session is now adopted.
Madam Presiding Officer, for the matters arising from the minutes, inviting members of the board who have some matters arising from the minutes of the preview session.
Any matters arising?
No member of the board signify to... Madam Presiding Officer, with regards to the letter from the Governor requesting the Sangguniang Panlalawigan for our authority to represent the province to meet with the Department of Energy and other relevant national government agencies regarding the request for the declaration of the entire province of Marin Duque as under SERP area in accordance with the microgrid. We have adopted a resolution authorizing the Governor to meet with the Department of Energy and other relevant national agency, government agencies to the proposed declaration of the province as under SERP area in accordance with the microgrid system. Instead of this, Madam Presiding Officer, during the committee hearing conducted last Wednesday, we have decided that we replace them...
A clarification? A clarification during the committee hearing?
Ah, yes, during the committee meeting. Kalaki aanito sa committee report. Madam Presiding Officer, with regards to page 7, from line 358 onwards, there is a pending report that was agreed upon during the committee meeting held last Wednesday and may I ask the Secretariat not to release the resolution adopted pending the approval of the committee report to be rendered by the Committee on Local Economic Act, Committee on Energy.
So, the Presiding Officer just wished to be clarified, the request for the consideration is with regard to the approval of this resolution?
It remains that it is, Madam Presiding Officer, but there will be an impending report to be rendered by the Committee on Energy that will repeal the same... We will not... This was already acted upon by the previous... During the preview session, that there will be a pending recommendation to be rendered by the Department of... The Committee on Energy that will reprise or amend the title and the intention of the resolution. So, what we are asking for, Madam Presiding Officer, is not to release the said resolution pending the report to be rendered by the Committee on Energy and its recommendation.
Okay, there is a manifestation, let it be in the proper motion that this particular resolution, the release will be suspended or hold pending the final disposition of the Sangguniang Panlalawigan on a subsequent committee report also related to the matter.
Yes, may I put that into motion? I move that we defer the issuance of the resolution authorizing the Honorable Governor to meet with the Department of Energy and other relevant national government agencies related to the proposed declaration of the province of Marin Duque as underserved area in accordance with Microgrid System Act pending the report to be rendered by the Committee on Energy. I so move.
There is a motion by Honorable Leva, duly seconded by Honorable Mangol, any objection? The Chair hears none, thus the motion of Honorable Leva is approved. The release of the resolution authorizing Honorable Governor Presbytero Velasco to meet with the DOE and other relevant national government agencies to the proposed declaration of the... Regarding the proposed declaration of the province as underserved area in accordance with the Microgrid System Act will now be held pending disposition on the subsequent committee report also related to the matter. The motion is approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, for the approval and amendment of the agenda, we don't have any privilege speech for this session as well as question hour. Madam Presiding Officer, the parliamentary status since we are now on the calendar of business, we don't have any antecedent business on the business for the day. The first item of the business for the day is the letter from the Governor requesting for the enactment of a resolution providing for the appropriation of the following collective negotiation agreement, CNA incentive for fiscal year 2022 and the productive enhancement incentive. May I ask that we recognize the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation?
The Gentleman from Santa Cruz, Honorable Lim, is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, my colleagues, good afternoon. Madam Chair, with the indulgence of the body, and this is already... This has been discussed previously, with the indulgence of the body. Madam Chair, I move that we pass a resolution approving the collective negotiation agreement, CNA incentive, for fiscal year 2022 to all officials and employees of the provincial government of Marin Duque pursuant to Budget Circular number 2022-3, Madam Chair. So, I so move.
Okay, with regard to this proposed resolution, is there any discussion? There is none, there is a motion, is there any second to the motion by Honorable Lim? Duly seconded unanimously, any objection? The Chair hears none, thus the resolution granting the collective negotiation agreement or CNA incentive for fiscal year 2022 to all officials and employees of the provincial government of Marin Duque pursuant to Budget Circular number 2022-3 is now approved.
How about the PEI?
Yes, Honorable Lim?
Again, Madam Chair, also I'm... Relative to the CNA, I move, Madam Chair, that we pass a resolution granting productivity enhancement incentive, PEI, to all officials and employees of the provincial government of Marin Duque for fiscal year 2022 pursuant to DBM Budget Circular number 2017-4, Madam Chair.
Is there any second to the motion by Honorable Lim? Duly seconded unanimously? And there is no objection. The resolution providing for appropriation for the grant of productivity enhancement incentive or PEI to all officials and employees of the provincial government of Marin Duque for fiscal year 2022 pursuant to DBM Budget Circular number 2017-4 is now approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ang sarap ipukpuk. Number... For the next item is the supplemental budget number four for calendar year 2022. May I ask again that we recognize the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation?
Honorable Ismael Lim, Vice Chair of the Committee on Appropriation is again recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since this has already been discussed previously, again, Madam Chair, I move that we pass a resolution approving the supplemental budget number four of calendar year 2022 involving the appropriation of 80,939,328 pesos and 58 centavos for the provincial government of Marin Duque. So move, Madam Chair.
There is a motion by Honorable Lim, duly seconded by...
Madam Chair, may I...
Yes, Honorable Leva.
I have some query, Madam Chair, with regards to the budget for the provincial engineering office. Because, Madam Chair, under resolution number 275 series of 2022, 2022, reprogramming of priority development projects funded out of the 20%...
This is item number...
Item number 49, Madam Chair. May I direct your attention to item number 49? Under resolution number 275 series of 2022, reprogramming of priority development projects funded out of the 20% development fund. Letter C, Provincial Engineering Office upgrading and improvement rehabilitation of Hinubuan Kalong has an appropriation of 883,120. However, under letter Q of the same office and of the same project, there is an appropriation of 700,000. May I know why there are two projects of the same nature under the same resolution with different amounts?
This is per resolution number 275 series of 2022. Item, letter number... Item letter, number... Letter...
C.
C for Hinubuan Kalong Provincial Road. This is 883,120.
Yes, Madam.
And...
Another under item letter Q.
Hinubuan Kalong Provincial Road for 700,000. We will defer final disposition on the second... On the motion of Honorable Lim with regard to the item on the supplemental budget number four.
Vice a bit, Madam Chair.
We now go, Madam Chair, to item number one under Communications and Petitions. Madam Chair, I ask that we recognize the Chairperson again of the Committee on Appropriation for the proper disposition of this request from Mr. Rene Kizada.
The... On behalf of the Chairman of the Committee on Appropriation is not with us now?
With the Vice Chairperson, Madam Chair.
Okay, again requesting the Honorable Ismael Lim. Under Communications and Petition, the request of Mr. Rene Kizada for the appropriation of 134,000 plus. Yes, Honorable Lim?
Ah, yes, Madam Chair, with the indulgence of the body and with reference to the... To the letter of Mr. Rene Kizada, I move that... And duly approved by our local chief executive, I move that we pass a resolution approving of the 134,187 pesos and 54 centavos appropriation under the night overtime... Under the overtime and night pay account intended for the payment of overtime services of the personnel of the provincial general services office, Madam Chair. I so move.
There is a motion duly seconded for the adoption of a resolution appropriating the amount of 134,187 pesos and 54 cents under the overtime and night pay account intended for the payment of overtime services of PGSO personnel. Is there any... Duly seconded, any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved, the resolution is approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, may this representation be recognized?
Yes, Honorable Leva.
Madam Chair, may I move for the adoption of a resolution declaring municipal ordinance number 248 series of 2022 of the municipality of Santa Cruz entitled "An Ordinance Creating the Different Positions" in the Office of the Municipal Engineer, Municipal Social Welfare and Development Office, Municipal Agriculture Office, Rural Health Unit 1 and 2, Office of the Municipal Planning and Development Coordinator, Municipal Environment and Natural Resources Office, Office of the Municipal Tourism, Public Employment Service Office, Permits and License Section, and the local BRRM Office as incorporated in the Devolution Transition Plan of the municipality of Santa Cruz Marin Duque in its second year of implementation for fiscal year 2023 and appropriating parts therefore as valid operational and within the power of the Sangguniang Bayan to enact. I so move.
There is a motion to declare municipal ordinance number 248 series of 2022 of the municipality of Santa Cruz to be declared valid, operative, and within the authority of the said LGU to enact. Any second to the motion? Duly seconded by Honorable Lim, Honorable Mangukang, any objection? The Chair hears none, thus a resolution declaring municipal ordinance number 248 series of 2022 of the municipality of Santa Cruz is now approved.
Madam Chair, may I move for the adoption of a resolution entitled "A Resolution Declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 249 Series of 2022" of the municipality of Santa Cruz entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Temporary Closure of Portion of Mabini Street from Corner Cason Street to Corner Gomez Street for the Christmas Bazaar Activity Sponsored by the Municipality from November 14, 2022 to January 8, 2023 as Valid Operative and Within the Power of the Sangguniang Bayan to Enact."
Is there any second to the motion of the Gentleman from Buak? Duly seconded by Honorable Lim, any objection? The Chair hears none, without municipal order, the resolution declaring municipal ordinance number 249 series of 2022 of the municipality of Santa Cruz entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Temporary Closure of Portion of Mabini Street from Corner Cason Street to Corner Gomez Street for the Christmas Bazaar Activity Sponsored by the Municipality from November 14, 2022 to January 8, 2023" is now declared valid, operative, and within the authority of the said LGU to enact is now approved.
Madam Chair, may I move for the adoption of a resolution entitled "A Resolution Declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 252 Series of 2022 of the municipality of Santa Cruz entitled 'An Ordinance Extending the Deadline of Payment for Business Taxes, Tricycle Franchise Fee and Mail's Permit Fee Without Penalties, Surcharges, or Interest from January 21, 2023 to February 28, 2023, and for other related purposes as Valid Operative and Within the Power of the Sangguniang Bayan to Enact." I so move.
Any second to the motion by Honorable Leva? Duly seconded by Honorable Rosales, Honorable Limpiada, Honorable Neril Mangol, any objection? The Chair hears none, thus... The Chair hears none. Thus, a resolution declaring municipal ordinance number 253 Series of 2022 providing- Municipal Ordinance Number 252 Series of 2022 entitled, Ordinance Extending the Deadline of Payment for Business Taxes, Tricycle Franchise Fees and Mayor's Permit Fee without penalty, surcharge or interest from January twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three to February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three and for other related purposes of the Municipality of Santa Cruz is now declared valid operative and within the authority of the said LGU to enact.
Madam Chair, may I move for adoption of a resolution?
Yes, Honorable Lim.
If I may interrupt, Madam Chair, I, I am, my apologies to our Majority Floor Leader. Madam Chair, our, our research person from the PPD is, is now here at the back, so-
I yield, Madam Chair, to the wish of the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation.
Thank you, gentlemen. Let's now go back to the pending item with regard to the clarifications needed with regard to supplemental budget number four.
Madam Chair, I move for suspension of the rules.
I second, Madam Chair.
The rule is now suspended.
Uh, ang kapanungan po namin na it, with regards to the twenty percent development fund, Resolution Number 275 Series of 2022 under supplemental budget. May nakalagay po kasi sa other letter C if, uh-
We can assist Mr. Arnell.
Yes, we recognize Mr. Arnell of PPD to shed light on the matter.
Uh, upgrading improvement rehabilitation of Hinubuan Kalong Provincial Road Antipolo Gasan amounting to eight hundred thirty-three thousand one hundred twenty. Pero doon sa letter Q sa Provincial Engineering Office, meron na namang construction and concreting of Hinubuan Kalong Provincial Road Antipolo amounting to seven hundred thousand. Bakit po kaya same resolution ay, for same object ng Hinubuan Kalong ay magkaiba pa ang amount?
Yes, Sir Arnell.
Hello po, magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. Tungkol po dun sa letter C po na upgrading improvement rehabilitation of Hinubuan Kalong Provincial Road Antipolo Gasan. Ito po itungkol, ito po ay para sa payment po noong relocation of pools na ginawa, na gagawin po sa Hinubuan Kalong Road na affected po noong kalsada. Tapos po 'yung seven hundred thousand, yun po ay naiu, bali po, binalek po natin 'yung dahil inabot na po siya noong sa LGSAP na CMG pinapundo. Bilik na po natin 'yung hindi nabayaran sa contractor po. So kailangan po nating ma, meron po ba yata pong kulang bago makompleto po 'yung road dun, kinakailangan po nating mabayaran po o magawa po 'yung kalsada dun. Kaya minagalokay po kami ng seven hundred thousand po.
So these are two separate-
Opo, opo.
-projects?
Opo, opo.
So-
Same road ka?
Ah, same road pero magkaiba po siya ng item. Yung isa po ay payment for relocation of pools, yung isa po ay pavement po no?
Na road construction.
Hindi kaya siya ay malagay sa splitting kasi na isang road lang siya. Bakit hindi papagsamahin 'yung eight hundred eighty-three thousand at saka 'yung seven hundred?
Ay hindi po pwede kasi po ang relocation ng pools po, ang gagawa po nun ay Marelko. Dun po naman sa seven hundred thousand, ay dun po naman sa pavement na isang ibang contractor po ang gagawa po. Kaya magkaiba po siya ng item po.
Sige po, kung yun po ang paliwanag. So, yung isa po ay para sa-
Transfer of-
Pwede ba nating ilagay that the amount intended for upgrading is for the relocation of pools?
Opo.
Pwede ilagay sa administrative provision? Baka para mag- And then the amount intended for is for the construction of a road?
Opo, opo.
We just have administrative provision, Madam Chair, to clarify this matter. Baka magka-
Let the clarificatory statement on those two projects be included in the administrative provision. Thank you, Sir Arnell.
Sige pa.
Salamat ng marami, kahit bigla-bigla. Nagre-rush na rin lang tayo po ng ano, budget deliberation. So what is now the pleasure of Honorable Lim?
Uh, if there are no more questions, Madam Chair, I move that we pass a resolution approving supplemental budget number four, calendar year 2022 involving the appropriation of eighty million nine hundred thirty-nine thousand three hundred twenty-eight pesos and fifty-eight centavos of the provincial government of Marin Duque, Madam Chair, I so move.
I second to the motion, Madam Chair, with a comment na, with, with comment, Madam Chair, na napakapalad po lagi talaga ng balalakan. Meron na namang apat na million dito. Napakapalad talaga. Mama, Mama Marelko ba, ano, iba na na kani.
There is a motion duly seconded by Honorable, sino nga po nagsecond? Honorable Leva for the adoption of a resolution approving supplemental budget number four calendar year twenty, for calendar year 2022 involving the amount of eighty million nine hundred thirty-nine thousand three hundred twenty-eight pesos and fifty-eight centavos of the provincial government of Marin Duque subject to some administrative provisions on the clarification with regard to the two items. Any objection? The Chair hears none. We just want to put it on record that the supplemental budget number four is based on already approved resolutions. Previously approved resolutions substantially deliberated during the previous months and that has been the basis of supplemental budget number four. So any objection? The Chair hears none. With that, supplemental budget number four for the calendar year 2022 in the amount of eighty million nine hundred thirty-nine thousand three hundred twenty-eight pesos and fifty-eight cents of the provincial government of Marin Duque is now approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Floor Leader.
Madam Chair, as much as the supplemental budget is an appropriation ordinance, may I move that it be tackled for final, for approval and final reading during the portion for the third and final reading later on?
Noted, uh, Mr. Floor Leader.
We now go to the, Madam Chair, again may this representation be recognized for the adoption of a resolution entitled, A Resolution Declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 253 Series of 2022 entitled, An Ordinance Providing for the Implementation of Bantai African Swine Fever Sabarangay Program, the Creation of a Municipal ASF Task Force, the Provision of Financial and Other Forms of Assistance to Families of Hungraisers Affected by African Swine Fever, appropriating necessary funds therefore and for other related purposes as valid operative and within the power of the Sangguniang Bayan to enact.
Any second to the motion by Honorable Leva? Duly seconded by Honorable Rosales, Honorable Limpiada, Honorable Mangol. Any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, the resolution declaring as valid operative and within the authority of the LGU of Santa Cruz to enact, municipal ordinance number 253 Series of 2022 is now approved.
Madam Chair, may I move for the adoption of a resolution entitled, A Resolution Declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 254 Series of 2022 entitled, An Ordinance Amendmenting Chapter Two, Article E, Situs of the Tax, Chapter Three, Article E, Special Permit for the Act Title, and Chapter Four, Special Services of Tax Ordinance Number One, Series of 2019 of the Municipality of Santa Cruz, Province of Marin Duque, as valid operative and within the power of the Sangguniang Bayan to enact.
Any second to the motion by Honorable Leva? Second, uh, seconded by Honorable Lim, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, the resolution declaring as valid operative and within the authority of the Municipality of Santa Cruz to enact, municipal ordinance number 254 Series of 2022 is now approved.
Madam Chair, may I move for a resolution entitled, A Resolution Congratulating the Provincial Veterinary Office of Marin Duque for Having Been Awarded as the Government Best Practice Recognition of 2022 by the Development Academy of the Philippines as Autor by the Honorable Mark Julio P. Caballos. I so move.
Any second to the motion by Honorable Leva? Seconded by Honorable Mangol. Thus, any, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, Resolution Number 2022-126 entitled, Resolution Congratulating the Provincial Veterinary Office of Marin Duque for Having Been Awarded the Government Best Practice Recognition of 2022 by the Development Academy of the Philippines is now approved.
Uh, Madam Chair, may I ask that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Environmental Protection and Human Ecology for the sponsorship of the proposed Resolution Number 2022-127?
Yes, recognizing Honorable Mang Kukang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This representation moves for the adoption of a resolution, a resolution including the list of cultural properties, the local cultural inventory of the province of Marin Duque, and endorsing the same with the National Commission Culture and the Arts, NCCA, for inclusion in the Philippine Registry of Cultural Property. And the following cultural properties are the following to be included in the inventory for cultural properties. First, Marin Duque Wildlife Sanctuary. Second, Torrijos Watershed Forest Reserve. Third, Naampias River Watershed Forest Reserves. Fourth, Marin Duque Mangrove Swamp Forest Reserves. And the Summit of Malindig. I so move, Madam Chair.
Yes, Honorable Leva, any manifestation?
Manifestation, Madam Chair. With all due respect to the distinguished sponsor, in my little knowledge, Madam Chair, the difference between culture and nature is its creator. The nature is being created by God while culture is being created by man. So, all of this belongs to the category of nature and not culture. To substantiate my claim, may I quote the nature of culture, Divine. And I quote, "Nature and culture are often seen as opposite ideas." What belongs to culture cannot be the result of human intervention. And on the other hand, cultural development is achieved against nature. And my humble opinion, Madam Chair, is this, the following, uh, what I say, uh, places cannot be considered as cultural property even if you are going to refer to Republic Act 10066 because they are made by the divine creator and not by human. Ang kultura po, base po sa napag-aralan namin sa PCL Convention noong sa Baguio, at kung saan ang kameron kami, ang diferensya po ng kultura sa kalikasan ay ang kalikasan po ay nilika ng Diyos sa bantala ang kultura ay nilika ng tao. Ang mataas na bayan po, ang murong ang mataas na bayan can be considered nature. But the cathedral that was built or established at the top of the hill can be considered culture. In the same manner na ang banawi, ang bundok ng banawi can be considered as nature but the terrace that was made by the people of the banawi is, can be considered culture. I, this is just my humble opinion, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Leva. Yes, Honorable Lim, before we give opportunity for the author to shed clarification.
Madam Chair, I would want to believe the former speaker but he mentioned that he has little knowledge, so I prefer not to.
You prefer what?
I prefer not to believe him because he mentioned that in my little knowledge.
So, yes, with that manifestation, any comment from the, from the author?
Maraming salamat, binibining tagapangulo. Ito po ay, inilapit sa atin ang ating mga kasama sa provincial tourism office headed by, ito po with Mr. Eddie Obligason at sinabing niya na, na isa ito, isa sa mga, ang mga nakalis, mga nakalis dito ay isa po sa isasama addition or inclusion para sa list ng cultural property ng, ng Marin Duque para maidista sa NCCA. Ano po, at ito mga nabanggit natin ay mga tangible, immovable type of cultural property.
Can, can the Presiding Officer be appraised again with regard to what are the, what are included in the list again for our reference?
Madam Chair, the following name of cultural properties are Marin Duque Wildlife Sanctuary, Torrijos Watershed Forest Reserve, Naampias River Watershed Forest Reserves, Marin Duque Mangrove Swamp Forest Reserves, and Summit of Malindig.
Summit of Malindig?
Yes, Madam Chair. At sila po ang nagidentify nito at hinihingi ata po ito ng, hinihingi ng NCCA ano po itong additional type of cultural properties para pumapasama at for possible funding assistance in the future.
Okay, with, with regard to the manifestation of Honorable Leva, is the Chair of the Committee on, or the Vice Chair of the Committee, ka ikaw na aba ang Chair?
Chairperson po, Madam Chair.
The Vice Chair of the Committee on Culture and Arts be willing to just give the chance to the committee to further study it? So that we can clarify what is meant by important cultural property as defined by law? And also we can be clarified with regard to the definition as manifested by Honorable Leva?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Can the good gentleman from Obog reconsider the motion?
Okay, Madam Chair, uh, I move for the deferment of the proposed Resolution Number 2022-127 to give way for further study of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mang Kukang, and with that, this item is again continuously re- referred to the Committee on Tourism and Culture for further study. Thank you, Honorable Mang Kukang and Honorable Leva.
Okay, thank you very much to the Honorable Mang Kukang for his understanding of my manifestation in my little knowledge.
So next time it will be ano, bigger knowledge?
Uh, Madam Chair, with a heavy heart, may I, may I ask that we recognize the Chairperson, the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Tourism for the approval of the next resolution?
With a, with a good heavy heart? Okay, yes, Honorable Mang Kukang, what is the disposition with regard to, is that, is that the proposed resolution of greetings to the Municipality Government of Buaq? Yes, Honorable Mang Kukang?
Madam Chair, in umukha po natin na magadapot tayo ng isang kapasyahan. Resolution Number 2022-128, ang Sangguniang Panalawigan ay nag, nagpahayon ng kanyang marugdop na pagbati sa bayan ng Buaq at kanyang mamamian. Sa pamamagitan, kagalangga ng Mayor Army, D. Sicario. Sa kailangang pagdiriwang ng ika apat daang, apat daang na taon ng pagkakatag at inasiguro ang patuloy na pakikiisa at suporta ng pamalaang panalawigan sa kailangang mga layunin, lunggatiin at pangarap para sa bawat isang bukainyo. I so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Mang Kukang. Just a query from the Presiding Officer. Instead of the Sangguniang Panalawigan, can we make-
Pamalaang Panalawigan.
So that it will include the executive also?
Pamalaang Panalawigan, Madam Chair.
And let the Governor also sign in the resolution?
Yes, now, now it is with a not-so-heavy heart. Hindi sila makarelate masyado sa ating pinag-usapan. Okay, so with that, there is a motion for the adoption of a resolution entitled "Resolution", ang pamahalaang panalawigan ay nagpapahayon ng kanyang marugdop na pagbati sa bayan ng buwak at kanyang mamamian sa pamamagitan ni Kagalanggalang Mayor Armey, Karyon, sa kanilang pagdiriwang ng ika isan limandaan taon ng pagkakatag at
Inasiguro.
Inasiguro ang patuloy na pakikisa at pagsuporta ng pamahalaang panalawigan sa kanilang mga layunin, lungatiin, at pangarap para sa bawat isang bukenyo. Any second to this motion? Julie, seconded, any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The resolution is adopted.
Madam Chair, may I ask that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Human Ecology, Environmental Protection and Human Ecology for the sponsorship of the next measure?
Yes, Honorable Mang Kukang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I formally move for the adoption of a resolution Number 2022-129, a resolution providing for a moratorium of the entry-use and propagation of genetically-modified organisms, or GMOs, in the province of Marinduke pending declaration provinces, provinces official stand on the matter issue based on scientific, legal, and moral standards. I so move, Madam Chair.
That is on the entry, comma, use. So there is a motion for the adoption of Resolution Number 2022-129. Is there any second to the motion? Julie, seconded, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, Resolution Number 2022-129, providing for the moratorium on the entry, use, and propagation of genetically-modified organisms in the province of Marinduke pending declaration of the province official stand on the matter or issue based on scientific, legal, and moral standards is now approved.
Madam Chair, may I ask that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Transportation for the accompanying resolution of Committee Report Number 68-2022.
So another item is an offshoot of the adopted Committee Report as recommended by the Committee, the proposed resolution providing for, resolution requesting the LTO. Yes, Honorable Mang Kukang?
Madam Chair, I formally move for the adoption of a resolution requesting the Land Transportation Office, LTO, and the Department of Transportation, DOTR to allow the establishment of more than one emission testing center in the province of Marinduke considering the latter is an island province. I so move, Madam Chair.
There is a motion, Julie, seconded by Honorable Mang Kukang, Julie, seconded, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, Resolution requesting LTO and DOTR to allow the establishment of more than one emission testing centers in the province of Marinduke is now approved.
Madam Chair, for the Committee Report Number 169, 2022, for the accompanying resolution, may I ask that we recognize the Chairperson, a Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation for the priority development projects to be funded out of the 20% Development Fund, CY 2023.
Offshoot of Committee Report?
Okay, sige. Okay, yes, Honorable Lim?
Madam Chair, as an offshoot of the Committee Report by the Committee on Appropriations, I move that we pass a resolution approving the priority development projects to be funded by the 20% Development Fund of calendar year 2023, Madam Chair. I so move.
I second the motion.
So what are we approving the plan? Priority development projects. Yes, there is, yes, Honorable Leva. There is a motion for the approval of the priority development projects to be funded by the 20% Development Fund for the calendar year 2023. Any objection? The Chair hears none before the approval. Dito na ba papasok? Medyo naconfused na ako. I remembered some consideration with regard. Yes, I just remembered that a while ago, this Presiding Officer requested that be be included in the recommendation of the Committee as adopted. The particular consideration of Resolution Number, Resolution Number 291 Series of 2022, that is the prioritization to the flood control and improvement of waterways in Sitio Doongan that will address the flooding in the three barangays in Mogpog among others to be prioritized in the 20% Development Fund. There is an item for Mogpog and ang nilalagay, ang nirirequestang puna natin doon na maisama is for this resolution to be implemented in that prioritization of projects.
So, Madam Chair, I would rephrase my motion. I move, Madam Chair, that we pass a resolution approving the priority development projects to be funded by 20% Development Fund calendar year 2023 with amendments, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Lim. Is there is, Julie, seconded? The motion is Julie, seconded, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, the resolution approving the priority development projects to be funded by 20% Development Fund for calendar year 2023 is now approved with amendment as discussed.
Madam Chair, we now approve the Local Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Fund for 2023 and may I ask that we recognize the Chairperson of Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Committee?
Yes, proceed, Honorable Lim.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Floriter. Madam Chair, I move that we pass a resolution approving the Local Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Fund, LDRMF, for calendar year 2023, Madam Chair, I so move.
There is a motion by Honorable Lim. Is there any second, Julie, seconded, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, the motion for the adoption of a resolution approving Local Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Fund for 2023, ah, tama ba? For 2023, is, the motion is approved. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, we now go to the flood plan and budget for 2023 and may I ask that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Women and Family?
Thank you. I move for the approval of the Gender and Development God Plan and Budget for 2023. I so move this Presiding Officer. There is a motion by Honorable Opis Mercado for the adoption of a resolution approving the God Plan and Budget for 2023. Any second? Julie, seconded, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, the motion approving a resolution, approving the God Plan and Budget for 2023 is now approved. The resolution is adopted.
Another item, Madam Presiding Officer, is the 2023 Provincial Plan and Action for Children and I ask the Chairperson of the Committee on Women and Family?
Thank you. I move for the approval of 2023 Provincial Plan of Action for Children. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
There is a motion. Is there any second to the motion by Honorable Mercado? Julie, seconded, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, the resolution approving the 2023 Provincial Plan of Action for Children is now approved.
Madam Chair, another item is the 2023 Provincial Action Plan for HIV/AIDS and may I ask that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Health and Nutrition?
Thank you.
Yes, Honorable Mercado?
Thank you. I move for the approval of 2023 Provincial Plan of Action for HIV/AIDS, 2023 Provincial Plan of Action for the Elderly, and 2023 Provincial Plan of Action for PWDs. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any second to the motion of Honorable Mercado? Seconded by Honorable Lim, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, a resolution approving the 2023 Provincial Plan of Action for HIV/AIDS, the 2023 Provincial Plan of Action for the Elderly, and the 2023 Provincial Plan of Action for Persons with Disabilities is now approved.
We now go to the Local Climate Change Action Plan 2023 and may I ask that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Disaster Risk Reduction and Management and Climate Change Adaptation?
Yes, Honorable Lim is recognized. Any second to the motion of Honorable Lim? Julie, seconded by Honorable Mangol, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, a resolution approving the Local Climate Change Action Plan for 2023 is now approved.
We now go to the Annual Cultural Development Plan and may I ask that we recognize the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Tourism?
Yes, Honorable Mang Kukang?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This representation moves for the adoption of a resolution for the approval of the Annual Cultural Development Plan calendar year 2023. I so move, Madam Chair.
Any second to the motion? Julie, seconded by Honorable Leva, Honorable Mangol, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, a resolution approving the Annual Cultural Development Plan of the province of Marinduke for the calendar year 2023 is now approved.
We now go to the Indicative Annual Procurement Plan and may I ask that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation?
Yes, Honorable Lim?
I move that we pass a resolution approving the Indicative Annual Procurement Plan of calendar year 2023, Madam Chair, I so move.
Any second to the motion by Honorable Lim? Julie, seconded by Honorable Mercado, Honorable Mangol, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, a resolution approving the Indicative Annual Procurement Plan for the calendar year 2023 of the province of Marinduke is now approved.
We now go to the Local Youth Development Plan. May I ask that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Youth and Sports for the sponsorship of the said measure?
Honorable Rosales?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move for the adoption of a resolution approving the Local Youth Development Plan calendar year 2023, Madam Chair.
There is a motion by Honorable Rosales, Julie, seconded by Honorable Limpiada, Honorable Leva. Any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, a resolution approving the provincial, the local youth development plan for the calendar year 2023 of the province of Marinduke is now approved.
Madam Chair, we now go to the Provincial Nutrition Action Plan for 2023-2025. May I ask that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Health and Nutrition?
Honorable Opis Mercado is recognized.
Thank you. I move for the approval of a resolution for the Provincial Nutrition Act Plan for 2023-2025. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any second to the motion? Julie, seconded by Honorable Mangol, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, a resolution approving Provincial Nutrition Action Plan for 2023-2025 of the province of Marinduke is now approved.
Madam Chair, may I move for the adoption of a resolution approving the Capacity Development Agenda for CY 2023-2025. I so move.
And the Devolution Transition Plan?
Wala na, wala na 'yan. Approved na 'yan.
Okay. So, thank you. There is a motion by Honorable Leva. Is there any second to the motion? Julie, seconded by Honorable Rosales, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, a resolution approving the CapDev, or Capacity Development Agenda for calendar year 2020-2022 of the province of Marinduke is now approved.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I move for the adoption of a resolution authorizing the Governor, Honorable Presbitero Vilasco Jr., to make a definite tender offer and negotiate for and in behalf of the PGM to purchase and enter into a deed of absolute sale with concerned lot owners in relation to the construction of Marinduke Wildlife Sanctuary and requiring the same to submit report of the negotiation to the Sangguniang Panalawigan.
Thank you, Honorable Leva. Can you reiterate the last part of the?
Yes, Madam Chair, again. May I move for adoption of a resolution entitled "The Resolution Authorizing the Governor, Honorable Presbitero J. Vilasco Jr., to make a definite tender offer and negotiate for and in behalf of the provincial government of Marinduke to purchase and enter into a deed of absolute sale with concerned lot owners in relation to the construction of road to Marinduke Wildlife Sanctuary to Magabok Buwak and requiring the same to submit the report of the negotiation to the Sangguniang Panalawigan." I so move.
Is there is, there is a motion? Is there any second to the motion of Honorable Leva? Julie, seconded by Honorable Mangol, Honorable Opis, any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, a resolution authorizing the Governor, Honorable Presbitero Vilasco Jr., to make definite tender offer and negotiate for and in behalf of the provincial government of Marinduke to purchase and enter into a deed of absolute sale with concerned lot owners in relation to the construction of road to Marinduke Wildlife Sanctuary into Magabok Buwak and requiring the same to submit the result of the negotiation to the Sangguniang Panalawigan is now approved.
Another item for the proposed, for the business for the day is Proposed Ordinance Number 16-21. May I ask the secretary to please read the title of the said proposed ordinance?
Proposed Ordinance Number 16-21 entitled, "An Ordinance Requiring Parents, Marrying Couples, and Students to Plant At Least Two Trees Upon Birth, Registration, Application for Marriage or Graduation Respectively, Providing for the Mechanism for Its Implementation, Appropriating Necessary Funds Therefore and for Other Related Purposes," authored by Honorable Antonio El Mang Kukang III, Chairperson of the Committee on Environmental Protection and Human Ecology.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we recognize the honorable gentleman from Mogpog for the sponsorship of the said measure?
Yes, Honorable Mang Kukang is recognized.
Madam Chair, I formally moves for the approval and enactment of an ordinance for second reading.
Okay, I thought you will render an explanatory note, no need. It's a product of Committee Report, okay. Proceed, Honorable.
Madam Chair, yung pang-explanatory note natin ay basa na po natin nung first reading.
Okay, noted, Honorable Mang Kukang, proceed. So, we are now, this is for second reading. Tama ba?
Second and.
So, okay.
Second.
Okay, proceed. So, can we now open it for discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, for discussion. Yes, Madam Chair, for discussion. For discussion and for any amendments, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, for the authorship authored by yours truly and co-authored by all the members of the Committee on Environmental Protection and Human Ecology. It's a period amendment sa bataya.
So, what is now the pleasure of the proponent?
Madam Chair, for now, I formally moves for the approval for the second reading of the proposed ordinance.
Madam Chair, point of order, Madam Chair, we are still on the period of amendment.
Okay. Is there anybody from the floor whom we would want to present an amendment to the proposed ordinance? Yes, Honorable Leva.
Just amendment by correction or addition on the title. "Requiring Parents, Marrying Couples and Students to Plant..." Add the word "at."
To plant "at."
At least.
To plant "at."
At least. At least.
Ah, yes.
At least two trees upon birth registration, application or graduation respectively. What am I supposed to do, Madam Chair? Yes.
The amendment is accepted by the proponent?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Any other proposed amendment?
Yes, Madam Chair. May I introduce amendment on Section 1. Short title: "That it be read as follows: This ordinance shall be known as the Community Tree Planting Ordinance of 2022 of the Province of Marinduke."
Again?
Delete the word "Marinduke." It is "Community Tree Planting Ordinance of 2022 of the Province of Marinduke." Is that acceptable to the...
Yes, Madam Chair. Accepted.
What's the difference between the two?
To be uniform with the other ordinance that we have already enacted just to have the identity of the 16th Sanggunian Palalawigan.
Okay, that we will use the... Okay. Any other amendment?
I thought, Madam Chair, with regards to the penal sanctions, I thought there was a recommendation that it be deleted. What is the...
Sanctions? The sanctions. Section 12?
Yes, Honorable Mang Kukang.
From one-month suspension for first offense, biligay, dilipat po natin ito under reprimand. Then for second offense, three-month suspension. Ginawa natin one-month suspension. And for third offense, sadip na dismissal, Madam Chair, ginawa natin three-month suspension or any appropriate administrative sanctions.
What?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Honorable Leva.
What is the prohibited act on this ordinance that imposes the same, the same sanctions?
Madam Chair, intended for the civil registers, for the barangays na magasertify, issue of certification, false certification, hindi po totoo, at doon sa magbibigay ng, sa mga civil registers na magbabigay.
Where is that provided for in this ordinance? What you are mentioning? Nasaan dito yun?
It's under IRR, Madam Chair. The pag-usapan po ito nung will be reflected in the IRR.
How can we impose sanctions when there is no prohibited acts on the ordinance, Madam Chair?
In Section 3, this Presiding Officer is supposed to seek clarification. With regard to the responsibility of the municipal Civil Registry Office, where the birth of the child shall be registered, must only release the certificate of live birth of the child upon presentation. So, that's one prohibited act, the release of the certificate of live birth before, without presenting the statement of compliance. But with regard to the other prohibited acts as being mentioned, if it will be in the IRR, how will it be? Yeah, he has a point. So, how shall we reconcile? What will be the other prohibited acts?
Madam Chair, ito lang. Dito lang po.
I would suggest, Madam Chair, that we insert a new section for the prohibited acts. Kasi, how can we impose sanction if there is no prohibited act?
So, what do you propose, Honorable Leva?
For insertion of a new section for the prohibited acts. But I just want to know for the record, what are these prohibited acts that calls for a sanction of reprimand for first offense, second offense? Kasi, you have mentioned here, the concerned officials employed in the municipal registry, the barangay owners, who will violate the provisions of ordinance. What provisions of this ordinance is being violated that imposes sanctions? Yun po yung...
Madam Chair?
Yes, Honorable.
Tapos na nabanggit ninyo na ito nga pong unauthorized release of the birth certificate from the civil registry and itong issuance of affidavit ng mga nagtatanim na ibibigay ng punong barangay. Akaragay po dito under Section 3. The affidavit must be sworn to before the punong barangay if the trees were planted within the premises of the barangay or before the PGNRO is planted in the government designated area outside the barangay where the family resides. Ano yun kuya? Wala na lang tayong sanctions?
Okay.
Repromand na lang. Repromand na lang natin first offense. Para ates kahit paano mayroon tayong ngipin.
Should not release, okay. One, first is, are you a man of all that there should be a separate section specifically for prohibited acts so that it will be clear what will be the prohibited acts?
Okay, Madam Chair. Aminabot po tayo para mas malino po na stated sa ating ordinance. Other section for...
And then, we need to, what tawag dito? We need to identify one by one what will be the prohibited acts. So, we can cut from the other provisions. If, do you have a meeting of the mind with regard to the unauthorized release by the Civil Registry Office without the parent sworn statement of compliance? That's one prohibited act. That is something that you need to decide. Another is, in Section 5, it is being mentioned that the school authority should not release Form 138, transcript of record, whichever is applicable for those who will not comply with this ordinance. One, is it not beyond our authority to do? To... Because Form 138 is a document that is personal to the student and there are cases already wherein Form 138 cannot be suspended, the release cannot be suspended. So, kaya nga mas magandang maisa isa, what will be the prohibited act so that so that you can, the body can study whether or not it is within the authority of the Sanggunian to do? Yes, Honorable Leva?
Also, Madam Chair, with regard to Section 3, the municipal ordinance, where the birth of the child shall be released, shall must only release... Isn't it in conflict with the Isof doing business act? Na makapumerong ano na, ah dahil... Ano, kasi di po ba may mga, may mga ano sila, tawag dun?
Bureaukret.
Oo, kailangan which to release, how many days? Yung, ang tawag dun is arta?
Arta.
Yung sa arta?
Anti-retake Act. Madam Chair, yung pong manifestation po ng ating gentleman from Bwak, Honorable Leva, pinag-usapan ito'y natakot na under ng committee meeting with the civil registrar. Ano po, at ito isang sa klamo nila na meron silang nasusundin under ng civil service. Ano po, napag-release nga ng, may oras ng pag-release ng papel. Ano po, actually po dito sa, dito po ay napag-usapan nga na at pwedeng gawin in advance yung pagtatanim at makakaroon ng ito ng wide dissemination, information dissemination sa mga diga ng mga barangays, ano po, under hanggang grassroots para masabi na nila na kailangan ng BHBNS sa mga manganganak o sa may kakasalan, na kailangan ng magtanim in advance para mawalan na ito ng hassle. Ano po, at ito po ay pinag-usapan na ng lahat ng mga civil registers na hindi naman ito makakaapekto, ano po, as long na makakapag-tanim nga in advance yung ating mga, mga kinakailangan magtanim at mayroon din tayong exemption to the rule na doon sa mga kailangan ng, yung mga hini taga rito na kailangan na yung namatay ang bata. Ano po, yung mga ganong exemption mayroon, isasama po yun sa under sa IRR. At ang grupo po nabubuo nito ay ito pong sina, ang atin pong Provincial Agri-Cultures Office, CUSEC, PGNRO, ang mga member ng, at ang committee ng, ng environmental protection, Madam Chair.
Yes, Honorable Dim?
Madam Chair, with regards to arta, processing of papers is one thing, but compliance is another. Yes, I will process your paper in three days, but you must submit the papers completely. Compliance is another, Madam Chair. Siguro po ay maganda po itong ordinance sa ito. This is a very noble ordinance and we may not see the effect of this now, but 50 years from now, pagka marami na po ang naitanim, we always complain about climate change and that everybody is saying that climate change is real and it's happening. But what are we doing? And this is a very, this is one way of doing our share for the environment and countering climate change. Ano po, maganda po ito, but we need to just, siguro, polish pa ng kaunti. We are not putting the liability on the married couple. Kakawa naman, nagkakasalaang eh, nagbuntis eh. Pero, but we are putting the liability on the records officers. We be strict on ourselves, on the part of the government. Maganda po ito, it's very noble. And in 50 years' time, Madam Chair, ang effect nito, maganda lang po ito. But we need to have this polished a little more, Madam Chair, kung siguro ay in accordance po dito sa mga wishes ni Honorable Leva.
Yes, Madam Chair. I am not against this ordinance just to set that record straight, but I just want it to be polished as you wishes also para mailagay po natin. Another thing po, gusto ko po ring maitanong, what if, karamihan po dito sa atin ay dito nanganak sa Marinduke Provincial Hospital na hindi naman taga... Kasi pagka kahit ikaw ay tagamugpog, tagagasan, pag dito ka pinanganak, ay ni-reregister po yun sa bayan ng Bwak, sino po ngayon ang magrerequire ng pagtatanim?
Okay, regardless kung saan ka po, anong barangay mo, saang bayan ka, ano po, ang certification upon issuance ng ating civil registrar dito sa Bwak, ano po, kahit saan ka galing ng barangay o saang galing kang bayan, may dala-dala kang affidavit or certification from your respective barangays, from what, kung saang galing kang municipal, tatagapin po yun ang civil registrar ng Bwak.
Ng Bwak, oo. Ibig sabihin, kung nagtanim sa, kung ang nanganak ay tagagasan, ay nakakuha siya ng certificate doon sa pinag... Magiging requirement pa rin siya ng...
Yes, Madam Chair.
Pero yun lang po yung counting, polish lang po dun sa... Pwede po bang ano, yung sinasabi ni Bukalmael na may certain period lang. What if, what if kung merong arta nga na, albo, three days? Na, na hindi...
Madam Chair?
Yes, Honorable Dim?
Madam Chair, pagka, if we will be strict with the arta, kung yun po ang susundin, oo, sige, mag-submit ka sa akin ng, iayusin ko yung, ipa-process ko yung paper mo, kung ako ang civil registrar, I will process your papers in three days. But you will submit to me a paper with your picture and with your compliance from the barangay or wherever na certifying na ikaw ay nakapagtanim na from day one. Bago mo isubmit sa akin yan, nandyan na yan. Compliance, Madam Chair, yun eh. Yung number of this processing is given yung, mayroon pong prescription period.
There is a complete requirement submitted. Yeah, Honorable Red, then let's see where we can go from here.
Madam Chair, napag-usapan po sa committee meeting, committee hearing, na pwede namang i-advance yoong pagtatanim. Hindi ibig sabihin na nabuntis siya o siya ay manganganak na. Dun pa lang siya magtatanim. Pwede naman na, na nabuntis siya, two months pa lang, pwede ng, pwede ng magtanim. Para paglabas ng bata, eh, mabilis na ma-process yung papel.
Is it provided in the, any provision of the ordinance? Saang part po yun nakalagay?
Pwede sa ano na lang? Meeting of the minds na ito, Madam Chair. Ito po yung, ito yung pinag-uusapan natin. Ito po yung tinakbo nung, actually, nung committee hearing. Ano po, itong tini-discuss natin dito, na-discuss na rin dyan.
Pero, mas magandang isulat na rin dyan.
Yeah, it must be, kasi, when they implement it, we will not be there to provide context. So, as much as possible, the ordinance must be clear and complete in itself.
Another info, Madam Chair, another info.
Honorable Red first, then...
Yung mga anak eh, delikado yung kanyang pagbubuntis. Yung mga anak eh, delikado 'yung kanyang pagbubuntis. Eh pwede na namang po na... Pwede 'yung kamag-anak niya magtanim, may certification na nagtanim yoong ah... Pinagtanim niya 'yung ibantao, pero yung manganganak, para dun sa manganganak na, na...
So saan po yun?
Kaya, kaya wala, wala, wala pang problema sa, sa paper, sa pagayos kung ano, i-advance lang po. Dalawa, Madam Chair.
Yes, Honorable Leva.
To answer your question, nandito po sa Section 3, the last sentence. Planting of trees must be done prior to the birth registration or within, ah, within the days after the child's birth. Pero mali po sa akin palaga 'yung word "must", kasi po may oray, "may", may be done prior to the birth or within 60 days after. Nakalagay namang po dini. So again, amendment, ah, Madam Chair, that we, ah, amend by deleting the word "must" with "may".
Yeah, okay, "must" is being substituted with the word "may". Okay, next, yung, yung binabanggit po ninyo kanina na parang recommendation at the committee level, how she, how are you going to... Yung other, other meeting of the minds ninyo and recommendations during the committee? Papaano po yun ma-reflect dito po sa provisions? Kasi we are already in the amendment, so all, all other recommendations at the committee level or at the individual capacity must be integrated and presented already, or introduced already. Do you want to discuss it section by section?
Mas maigip ah.
So we, so we can help in the polishing of ano? So with regard to the short title, it has been amended already, declaration of policy. Ah, it is sufficient, you think so? Section 3, mandatory tree planting requirement for birth release ah, must only release the, the certificate of live birth upon presentation. So that is a, a mandatory requirement. So ito po 'yung ipapanganak pa lang, hindi po kasama dito 'yung, wala itong retroactive, ano, effect? Kailan ang effectiveness?
Ito po 'yung mga ipapanganak pa lang at saka 'yung mga late registration, late registrations.
It must be, ano po, ah, reflected in the effectiveness upon approval, okay. Nakalagay po ba yun, 'yung application, kung si kanino to applicable? Like in the late registration? Okay, Section 3. Any amendment in Section 3?
Yun lang po 'yung sinabi ko kanina dun sa last, ano?
"May".
How about Section 4?
Couples who are applying for marriage and marriage required to plant. Hindi po kaya pwedeng dagdagan na natin 'yan sa marriage couple, matanda namang po na 'yan.
Ano po ang...
Kahit mga five, at least five trees.
Section ano po 'yan?
Section 4 po.
Okay.
Kasi okay lang po dun sa, 'yung sa nauna. Ano po ang ano mo, wag kayo po nating six para...
Section 4 paragraph. Ano pong paragraph?
Ah, Section 4 po, Section 4, paragraph 1. Shall be required to plant at least six trees.
Ah, you want to increase it to six instead of two?
Oo, marriage namang po ito eh.
Okay, any, any comment on that?
Madam Chair, hindi po kaya ito contradict sa ating title.
Later on, later on, we will amend the title after we, after we discuss it thoroughly.
Okay pa, amenable po tayo na six trees, for, at least six trees for married couple, marrying couples.
Section 5, any, any ah, amendment?
Yun po sa ano, pwede pong paltan natin yung, the municipal ordinance where the marriage shall, instead of the word "must".
Saan po yun, Section 5?
Sa Section 4 pa rin po. Pwede pong ma-stipulate na 'yung la word na "must" ay paltan po natin ang la word na "shall", as we have ah...
Shall release like, like in line 35, must only release the certificate. So the...
Shall only.
Registry office shall release instead of must only release. Is the proponent amenable to that? Ano pa pong line, yung...
Basta yun lahat po, i-stipulated na po dun sa lahat.
Yung "must", lahat po ipapatatay ng "shall"?
For, for purposes of style, Madam Chair.
"Shall".
Okay. The, the proponent...
This is just for the purposes of style, Madam Chair. Wala namang po itong na...
Okay, same substance, same substance. All must only, shall be replaced with the word "shall".
Just to be consistent kasi nagamit na po na 'yun.
Section 5.
Pwede po bang dagdagan na rin natin ito ng apat? At makaka malalaki namang po ito, grade 6, grade 12, and college. At least four.
Any comment on that? Yes?
Okay, Madam Chair, at least four, for graduating students.
What is the comment of the proponent with regard to the restriction on the school authorities for the release of Form 138?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Honorable...
Ang alam ko po 'yung Form 138, 'yan po ay school to school release. Siguro po ay, 'yung transcript of record and diploma is sufficient enough.
Diploma na lang.
Oo, kasi yung pong ano, school to school po ito na, na-release sa iwa, hindi po ito basta na-release sa ta, sa tao. Yung Form 138, ang na-release po ay 'yung form, 'yung card. Itong Form 138, ito 'yung ano eh.
So mo Form 137?
Oo, Form 137 po is school, wag mo po 'yung form, 'yung school card na lang.
School card.
Does anybody familiar with, with DEP Ed guidelines? Are they not prohibited from, from ah, not releasing Form 138 on time or transcript of record on time? I just remember watching a situation in Tulfo, wherein 138 was not released for non-payment of ah, requirement also by the school and they, they were, ano, they were reprimanded.
Itong ang nabigay na lang po natin na is school clearance. Shall not be issued as school clearance. Yun namang po ay prerequisite sa pagkuha niya ng mga...
Documents.
Documents.
Meron po bang na, during the committee hearing, meron po bang mga, mga representative from the educational institution?
Walapot, Madam Chair, na na-invite sa education sector.
Yes, Honorable Lim.
For graduating.
We may be stepping on ah, on ah, on the territory of DEP Ed, Madam Chair.
Yes, and aside from that, during the committee hearing, no representative from DEP Ed or educational institution has been invited. So it, it, I... The presiding officer believe that we must act with prudence on this. We may need to confer first and hear first the, the opinion inside of educational institutions on this.
Pwede siguro ng, Madam Chair, I think...
Honorable Mangkukang.
Pwede po natin itong i-replace, Madam Chair, ng for school clearance na lang. Para po mas walang, dahil tayo nakikita na any violation sa DEP Ed circulars. Ano po, kasi dun sa release kasi ng mga one, Form 138, Form 137, transcript of records, ano po, taga may guideline sila dyan eh. Pero the clearance itself, ano po, bago nga sila kumuha ng makarelease ng mga documents na yun, maga-handle ko sila ng school clearance. Ano po, at maaring ito ay isa na sa dalagay nila dun sa clearance. At hindi siya makakaapekto kasi siya ano lang siya, hindi walang nagko-cover dito.
But again, don't we find it necessary also to hear first the position of educational institutions? Because it directly affect their procedural process within the school? Yes, Honorable Lim?
Yes, Madam Chair, ah, I, I think it would be proper if we, we practice due diligence by researching, a little research will not help, Madam, ah, a little research will not hurt, Madam Chair. Ah, we have to be careful on...
Yes, because it has penalty provision. Yes, Honorable Red? Bukal Mangkukang. So, ah, can, can we seek the assistance of the secretariat for the microphone of Honorable Red? We can hardly hear you, Honorable Red.
Hello. Ah, Madam Chair.
May, may hear from the proponent?
Ah, Madam Chair, ang atin pong magde-designate ng ah, ng lugar na pagtataniman, kung barangay, ano po, the, the punong barang, the Sanggunean barangay, the punong barangay. Kung ito ay mga timberlands, forestlands, D E N R. Kung ito po ay provincial lands, ano po, the PGN Row. Pwede po magtanim kung private, sakaylang backyard, sakaylang private lands. Kung gusto yung, gusto kong dun magtanim, nung mga magtatanim, pwede po sila doon.
Is it integrated in the provision of the ordinance?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Saan po siya?
Dito po sa designation of...
The clearance na nagtanim sila comes from, from barangay or PGN Row. Pero 'yung, 'yung tinatanong ni Bukal Red is who will guide them? Kung saan ang dapat na pagtatanim?
Manganganak at ah, dito marirestray ang bata at ah, hindi, dito lang, dito na rin magtatanim o kung halimawa ililipat dun sa, ano, sa kanilang barangay. Eh, natitiya ko po na ang barangay ay wala namang lupa na kanilang ah, pwedeng maituro unless na lang kung meron nga timberland dun sa kanilang area, Madam Chair. Sino po mag-aidentify, yun po, yun lang po ang katanungan ko.
Yeah, to, to make sure also that the trees being planted can be properly, can properly grow. Kasi baka nga naman maitanim sa kapit bahay, nakapag-tanim, may requirements, may, may picture, kaya lang pwedeng bunutin yun ang kapit bahay. Kung, kung hindi yun pag-aari niya kasi at gagawin niyang bahay o meron siyang sariling plano sa kanyang lupa. So, so how can we clarify? The presiding officer agreed that this is, the intention is very noble and I think we should really find way to have this kind of ordinance. But, but also we need to maybe indeed polish it to make it more implementable, to make sure that it will be, can be implemented well. So... Can we, ah, with the indulgence of the proponent, can we possibly defer muna further discussion on this? And ah, let's try to review it again and get the information that we need. Ah, so that the next session that we, subsequent sessions that will ah, schedule it for continuous deliberation, we have the additional information that we need. So in the pipeline, we need to clarify the possible concern of the educational institutions, that's one. Pakirecord lang ho, kung ano po 'yung mga ilang issues and concerns that we need to, that we are putting in the pipeline. Yes, and ah, I was reminded, this is an ordinance also, so it requires, with penalty provision, so it requires public hearing. So, ah, when you need to decide if the committee hearing that you, that you did can already ah, ah, will be sufficient as a requirement for public hearing. But ang critical lang doon is hindi na imbittahan ang representative from school authorities when they are directly affected or directly partner in the implementation. So that's two. Third is the concern on the identification of areas that will be subject of the, the planting. Another, siguro, number four is, pag nagtanim ka po kasi, kailangan mo rin i-register sa, sa, ano ito, sa D E N R. So that the disposition and monitoring on that until cutting ay ah, anong tawag dito? Ay ah, naka-record po sa D E N R. So I believe it must be reflected also kung papaano 'yung registration sa D E N R. Yes, Honorable Lim?
If, if it will be the barangay officials that will certify? So dapat ay 'yung mga liga, 'yung liga po ay invited, Red?
Okay, yes, ah, the, the ah...
Kahit 'yung mga, 'yung ano lang, 'yung representative...
Because the certification will come from them. So we need to hear also the, the concerned officials, barangay officials. Yes, Honorable Leva? Other, other issues and concerns para pag binalikan po natin ito, mas complete na po 'yung ating staff work.
That is the essence, Madam Chair, of ah, deliberating ah, an ordinance. Kasi dyan natin nakikita ah, kung ano 'yung mga loopholes at naganda po 'to 'yung ordinance sa natin. Eh, ito naman ay hindi naman natin ina, na, madali, at least, kahit daan daan siya, na nakikita naman natin 'yung ah, pwede pang ikaganda nung ordinance ah. Kaya mas maganda po na meron kita talagang period of deliberation and period of amendment. That's why ah, na, nagaganda na po 'yung nangyari sa atin. Mas maganda rin po nga niyong ginawa mo ngayon, Madam Chair, that we do it ah, section, section by section. Kasi dun po talaga nakikita natin kung ano 'yung in conflict with the, the, ano. Ay, Madam Chair, may I only ask what will happen now? If we give consideration, we will revert it back to the committee so that the committee will do further committee works?
That is what is ideal, so that when we deliberate, every, all the additional information will be completed already and the concerned committee will have jurisdiction to make further, further, further ah, research. And kung kailangan magpatawag ulit ng meeting, then the committee can, can do ah, kung ano 'yung mga hindi pa nagagawa. So will it be, I, I guess, Honorable Mangkukang will understand? If ever, ah, will it be okay? Ah, the presiding officer may opt to, to refer it back to the committee to complete the recommendation? Although, in, we have meeting of the minds already with regard to other... Although, we have meeting of the minds already with regard to other items, specifically with the objective of the ordinance. It is just a matter of completing the information that we need and making sure that the processes are being done. Yes, Honorable Lim?
Yes, Madam Chair, I agree. And Madam Chair, ang, ito po ay ano, this is very, this is great. Ang ganda po nito, imagine mo po kung, lalo kung mai-involve ang students. Like yun sa dami ng estudyante natin dito, tas ay lahat ay magtatanim. At matutuwa rin po dyan, Madam Chair, the, the, itong organization, itong Department ng Environment, matutuwa rin po ang D E N, accomplishment nila yun eh. Yung pag nagtanim yung mga estudyante, hindi naman yun accomplishment ang D E N R yun. Yung po ay a-record nila na sila ay nakapagtanim ng ganito karami. Yung po ay paasa nila sa itaas na malaki accomplishment nila po yun. Kaya matutuwa rin po ang D E N R. Pero i-harmonize po natin yung, i-harmonize natin yun nga yung, we make sure that we are not stepping on the bounds of other departments and organizations, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Leva?
Saka isa rin po yung, yung ma-insure yung sustainability noong ginawa. Yung naitanim na, sino naman ang mga kalaga nun? Kung meron talaga, kaya nga tama din yun sa barangay or sa D E N R. Sino sa D E, meron bang madato ang, ah, alam ko meron pong madato ang D E N R na sinalay yung nagamintin ng mga inatanim natin dyan sa mga protected areas eh. So, mas maganda rin pong maisama at kung magpapamiting po ang D E N R kung paano makakatulong dito sa noble idea ng ating kasamang Tres Mangkukang.
Okay, yes, Honorable Limpiada?
Karagdagan lang po ano, as barangay captain, kasi yung mga idle lands natin sa barangay, ah, nasisiguro ko na sila po ay, ah, idesignate nila yung kanilang lupa para mapagtanim ano. Ang tanong lang, kung sino ang makikinabang dun sa tinanim mong unu. Thank you.
Correct. Yes, if it is, if it is, ha, if it is ano nga yung mga trees na kagaya ng Nara, Mahogani and then those things, it must be registered to D E N R. And kung sino yung nagpa-register sa D E N R, yun lang, yun ang may authority to cut it. Yun ang pwedeng mag-apply in years to come, just in case kailangan siyang ikat. Yes, Honorable Leva?
Ang sa amin po sa Bayan ng Buak, sampu po mag-asawa. Kasi po, after na po mag-silber anniversary, Mahogani ang atanim, meron na silang investment. Investment na after twenty-five years, may makukuha kang Mahogani na pwede mong putulin. Pero, ah, re-plant mo rin lang ulit. Ibi sabihin, noble idea din na nakakapagtanim ka, pero nakakatulong ka rin. As for applied yun, doon sa mga mag-asawang ano. Pero, kaya mas magandang, ina-sabi ko rin po kay Tres, doon sa, na makita rin niya po yung model yung sa Bayan ng Buak na inotorn po ni Goncalomé Magallán noong panahon niya. Na kinabangan din po talaga yung ano na yun. Madam Chair, ah, siguro po ay mas mainam talaga na magpatawag uli si Bokal Tres ng isa pang.
Yeah, yeah, we, after we refer it back to the committee, I believe that the committee will do its work to complete the information that we need. Yes, Honorable Lim, then we will close this particular item.
Madam Chair, yung po concern, kanina minamagit mo ni Bokal Dani or saka ni Bokal Buti, yung anong klaseng puno yung atanim, yung mga iba-iba, mga variety?
Okay, also a guideline with regard to the trees allowed to be planted? Yes, Honorable Leva?
Pwede rin po ba ma-consider kung pwede ang manggroom? Oo, na ano, kasi kung sa ibang ano, baka pwede ding i-invest din natin yung manggroom, ah, oo.
Okay. Thank you, Honorable Leva. And thanks everyone for the substantive input. I'm sure Honorable Mangkukang is taking note of the recommendations. So for the meantime, this particular item is being, yes, Honorable Leva?
May I make the formal motion, Madam Presiding Officer?
Yes, Honorable Leva?
That the proposed ordinance be deferred? With deeper consideration of proposed ordinance sixteen-twenty-one and return it back to the committee to which it was referred to for further study, as a whole?
So is it, it is okay with the, the, the proponent understand it? So this particular item is being referred back to the Committee on, Committee on Environment for additional recommendation? Okay?
Next item is the proposed ordinance number sixteen dot nineteen with regards to the... Read the title of the said ordinance.
Proposed ordinance number sixteen dot nineteen entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Honorable Governor, P. B. J. Velasco Jr. To Initiate Expropriation, Expropriation Proceedings Before the Regional Trial Court Against the Owner of the Lots in Barangay Masiga and Liptangin, Gasan, Marinduke, Who Rejected the Offer and Refused to Enter into Id. of Absolute Sale With the Provincial Government of Marinduke Relative to the Marinduke Airport Extension or Expansion Project."
Madam Chair, may this presentation be recognized for the sponsorship of the said measure? Madam Chair, ah, this has something to do with the request of the governor to, to grant authority to him to negotiate with the landowners of, ah, in, ah, lotowners in Barangay Masiga and Barangay Liptangin relative to the Marinduke Airport Extension and Expansion Project. And may I open the period of deliberation and debate for this matter? I would like to...
The floor is now open for deliberation on this matter?
I would like to explain, Madam Chair, that during the deliberation in the committee level, we have given Attorney Romel Fernandez to continue to negotiate to the lotowners until October thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two. And submit a report to us on those who agreed with the negotiation and those who did not. Unfortunately, it was overtaken by events. The governor is already asking for the follow-up on what happened to his request. And for this reason, we opted to deliberate on the floor this matter. However, Madam Chair, Attorney Romel Fernandez, as of the present, have not submitted any report to us. Hence, we opted to, the committee opted to presume that all of these lotowners did not agree with the offer of the provincial government. For some clarification, may I ask if we could avail of the services or the presence of Attorney Romel Fernandez to clarify on some issues?
Unfortunately, Attorney Fernandez is now, is no longer available now. But he's in Marinduke. He's, ah, he's attending hearing in Santa Cruz.
Pending the presence of Attorney Fernandez, may consideration of this proposed ordinance be deeper and considered in the unfinished business for the next session. And we sent communication to Attorney Fernandez to, one, submit a report on what transpired and be present in the next session for some clarification.
Okay, thank you. So we will defer further discussion on the, on this particular item and make proper communication to inviting Attorney Fernandez or through the honorable governor, a communication to the honorable governor requesting the presence of Attorney Fernandez or, or a representative of the governor to shed clarification on the output on the result of the negotiations. And also requesting Attorney Fernandez to be present or any representative of the governor to be present in the next session.
Okay, Madam Chair, the next item is the proposed general appropriations ordinance number one.
By the way, before that, in the communication, pakilagay na rin lang that we, did we communicate the request of the Sangguniang Panlalawigan to provide a report on the negotiation or updates on the negotiation in the past? Nagpadala po tayo ng communications saka, nagbigay sila ng, ng report? Okay, pakilagay rin lang po dun sa, sa ating communication to the governor that, kasi he is following up, baka hindi po masyado nakarating sa governor, that we have, we had previous communication to them requesting the result of the negotiation done. Okay, yes, Honorable Leva?
Again, Madam Chair, the next item in the business for the report on our session is the proposed general appropriations ordinance number one series of twenty-twenty-three. May I ask that we recognize the vice chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation for the sponsorship of the said measure?
Madam Chair, as stipulated in the, in the committee report to the Committee on Appropriations, I, ah... I present here with Madam Chair, the appropriations ordinance, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Annual Budget of the Provincial Government of Marinduke for Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Three in the Amount of One Billion, One Billion Six Million Three Hundred Nineteen Thousand One Hundred Thirty-Eight Pesos for the General Fund Proper and the amount of Twelve Million Eight Hundred Ninety-Seven Thousand Six Hundred Eighty-Two Pesos for the operations of Marinduke San and Gravel Economic Enterprise, covering the values expenditures for the operation of the provincial government for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three and appropriations of all necessary funds for the purpose." Madam Chair, I submit for a period of, for a, for a period of interpretation, Madam Chair.
Okay. But before that, just for information of the August budget, the resolution of the Peace and Order Council with regard to the PUPS plan and budget has been received by the Secretariat already. So it may be something that... Ah, may be considered for consideration. So we'll proceed first with the budget. Ah, the floor is now open for deliberation on the proposed twenty-twenty-three budget. Honorable Oriol Leva III, Honorable Antonio Mangkukang III, Honorable Ismael D. Pilim, Honorable Jose Neril Mangol, Honorable Valdo Mero Limpiada, and Honorable Lauren Rosales. Madam Chairperson, your honor, we have six members of the board present, so we have the necessary quorum.
Thank you. I'll communicate with Bokal Caballes. He could be present to...
Oo.
If he could be present to provide information with regard to the PUPS. I think the Peace and Order Council had adjourned already.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Honorable Leva?
We have two more items left and this concerns, the two items concerns, ah, Bokal, ah, Bokal Caballes, the PUPS and the budget.
And the supplemental?
The supplemental.
Third and final.
Okay, so we can proceed first with the supplemental while waiting for Bokal Caballes. Kindly inform Bokal Caballes that the PUPS is already with us and we need inputs from him. Okay, we are now in supplemental budget number four. For the third and final reading, what is the pleasure of... Nagresume na ba? What is the pleasure of the vice chair of the Committee on Appropriation?
Madam Chair, with the indulgence of the budget and since this has been approved for second reading this earlier during the session, Madam Chair, I move that, that the supplemental budget number four calendar year twenty-twenty-two involving the appropriation of eighty million nine hundred thirty-nine thousand three hundred twenty-eight pesos and fifty-eight centavos of the provincial government of Marinduke be approved for third and final reading, Madam Chair. I so move.
Any second to the motion? Duly seconded by Honorable Leva, Honorable Mangol. Any objection? The Chair hears none. Supplemental budget number four of the province of Marinduke is now approved on third and final reading. Okay, there is a communication received from the Peace and Order Council. What is the pleasure of the Chair of the Committee on Rules?
Madam Chair, may I move for the suspension of the rules? Inasmuch as the date of receiving communications for the information of the board, we have received at three fifteen today, December nine, a first endorsement coming from the provincial director of the D I L G on the basic copy of resolution approving CY twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five, peace and order and public safety plan and anti-drug and abuse action plan of the province of Marinduke and a resolution approving the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three PUPS plan and budget for the province of Marinduke involving the amount of thirteen million pesos and likewise recommending the approval of the Sangguniang Panlalawigan for their adoption and approval. So I move that it be considered in the business for the day portion of today's session.
There is a motion from the Chair of the Committee on Rules for the inclusion of the two documents submitted to us by the Peace and Order Council and the P D A C for consideration in today's session and for inclusion in the business for the day. Any second to the motion? Any objection? The Chair hears none. The two documents as submitted is now part of the order of business.
Madam Presiding Officer?
Yes, Honorable Leva?
As vice chairperson of the Committee on Peace and Order and Public Safety, may I move for the approval of the...
For a while, Honorable Leva? Okay, Honorable Leva?
Okay na po?
Yes, ah, po.
Okay, Madam Presiding Officer, as vice chairperson of the Committee on Peace and Order and Public Safety, I move for the approval of the CY twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five Peace and Order and Public Safety Plan and the Anti-Drug Abuse Plan of Action of the Province of Marinduke. I so move.
Yes, Honorable Limpiada?
Opo. Tatanong ko lang po sana yung three-year plan. Kung ito po ay nasunod na natin, kung ito po ba yun, sa three-year plan natin before, maybe on the fifth and three, ah, fifth and, ah, Sangguniang, ay, ano po ba, yun po ba ay fully implemented na? Based doon ay na, kapag ano tayo dito, kasama dito sa mga pla, sa mga pinunduhan? kapag ano tayo dito kasama dito sa mga pla sa mga pinunduan natin
this is a new three-year uh plan for the PUPS po this is a this is a we approved the twenty twenty to twenty twenty two plan which has been the basis of the budgeting for PUPS during the uh previous years and until this year this twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five plan is another reference that will be the reference for the twenty twenty three budgeting and twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five so in implement po yung previous uh plan in in a way based on the budgeting ano po ba yung tanong specific ulit
before uh ito po ay yung three-year plan natin di ba nagaspecific tayo lahat ng mga plano so ang pinunduan po natin today and now ito pong for twenty twenty three
for twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five plan it's a three-year plan that will be the basis of what will be the priorities uh nabibigyan ng pondong for next year twenty twenty three for twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five
so nagpunta po tayo based on the preview yung mga yung fifteen regular uh fifteen ta Sangguniang ay ito ito pa rin yun ay kasama po ito doon sa mga plano
Madam Chair
yes Honorable Leva
as far as the peace and order and uh public safety plan is concerned it's a term-based plan meaning to say at the beginning of a term of a new administration it will commence that's why our new plan for today is for twenty twenty three up to twenty twenty five that is the term of the newly elected officials of the province so meaning to say what was uh done before is that the twenty nineteen up to twenty twenty two uh plan or the twenty 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 one twenty two plan is good for the previous uh set of officials that were elected by the people so hindi siya tulad nung ibang plan na continues continues but uh what is uh being considered in the PUPS plan is on based on the term of a set of elected official
okay yes Honorable Limpiada you're clarified thank you thank you Honorable Leva for the clarification
so may I reiterate uh reiterate my motion na Madam say Madam Presiding Officer to approve the CY twenty twenty three twenty twenty five peace and order and public safety plan and the anti-drug abuse action plan of the province of Marinduke
is there any second to the motion by Honorable Leva uh duly seconded by Honorable Mangol Honorable Lindin Opis any objection the chair hears none thus a resolution approving the calendar year twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five peace and order and public safety or PUPS plan and anti-drug abuse plan of action of the province of Marinduke is now approved
Madam Presiding Officer may I move for the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty three PUPS plan and budget for the province of Marinduke involving the amount of thirteen million pesos
is there any second to the motion this is for the twenty twenty three PUPS plan and budget uh moved by Honorable Leva duly seconded by Honorable Lim is there any objection the chair hears none thus the twenty twenty three thus a resolution approving the twenty twenty three PUPS plan and budget for the province of Marinduke involving the amount of thirteen million pesos is now approved
Madam Presiding Officer the last item in our business for today is the proposed general appropriations ordinance
yes Honorable Lim
Madam Chair uh thank you um thank you uh Mr. Floor Leader Madam Chair I present uh the general appropriate the proposed general appropriations ordinance number sixteen dash twenty seven an ordinance authorizing the annual budget of the provincial government of Marinduke for fiscal year twenty twenty three in the amount of one billion six hundred million three hundred nineteen pesos uh three hundred thousand and one hundred thirty eight pesos for the general fund proper and the amount of twelve million eight hundred ninety seven thousand six hundred eighty two pesos for the operation of Marindukano Sun and Gravel Economic Enterprise MSGE covering the various expenditures for the operation of the provincial government of for fiscal year twenty twenty three and appropriating the necessary funds for the purpose Madam Chair uh the said the the uh the uh the this representation Madam Chair uh on behalf of the committee of uh on behalf of the committee on appropriations is now ready for interpretation Madam Chair
the item is now open for deliberation any any uh verificatory questions or any any deliberation on the item at hand the twenty twenty three annual executive budget in the amount of uh one billion six million uh and three hundred nineteen thousand one hundred thirty eight pesos any any discussion from the floor wala na we are now we'll now proceed with the
period of uh period of amendment Madam Chair
period of amendment
this representation Madam Chair is ready on behalf of the committee on appropriations uh Madam Chair we are now ready for uh the period of amendment
yes uh any any proposed amendment or uh administrative provisions from the floor yes Honorable Leva
uh this representation submitted uh the proposed amendment to the chairperson of the uh to the vice uh to the distinguished sponsor and he accepted the same as having been considered under the committee uh amendment so it is already incorporated in the uh the general uh administrative provision
so the administrative provisions are already included in what we are approving in in what was presented to us
yes Madam Chair uh we have been duly notified and have it have it included in the proposal ordinance Madam Chair
okay with that i- i- is it included already the uh the provision that this uh presiding officer manifested a while ago
yes Madam Chair
in consideration to the uh prohibition for the use of any fund in the in the budget that the for for possible entry use or propagation of GMO in the province of Marinduke
yes uh Madam Chair and this is the wording of the said provision no budget for the use and propagation of GMOs as defined by law shall be appropriated herein and in the subsequent supplemental budget
okay thank you uh Honorable Leva so any other additional provisions yes Honorable Limpiada you have something in mind uh Honorable Red any additional provision so it's not the pleasure of the gentleman from Santa Cruz
Madam Chair uh if there are no more uh amendments to the proposed amendments to the proposed ordinance Madam Chair I move that the general appropriations ordinance an ordinance authorizing the annual budget of the provincial government of Marinduke for fiscal year twenty twenty three in the amount of one billion six hundred million three hundred nineteen thousand one hundred thirty eight pesos for the general fund proper and the amount of twelve million eight hundred ninety seven thousand six hundred twenty uh eighty two pesos for the operation of Marindukano Sun and Gravel Economic Enterprise MSGE covering the various expenditures for the operation of the provincial government for fiscal year twenty twenty three and appropriating the necessary funds for the purpose be adapted for second reading Madam Chair
there is a motion to approve the twenty twenty three annual executive budget general fund for the province of Marinduke for the second uh reading is there any second to the motion duly seconded by Honorable Limpiada Honorable Leva Honorable Red any objection the chair hears none thus the the motion is approved the resolution approving the twenty twenty three annual executive budget general fund is now approved for second reading
thank you Madam Chair
Madam Chair inasmuch as no more amendment was introduced we consider for third and final reading
with that there is a motion for the adoption of a resolution for approval of the uh twenty twenty three annual executive budget for third and final reading any second to the motion duly seconded by Honorable Rosales Honorable Mangol any objection the chair hears none thus a resolution thus an ordinance thus an ordinance approving and authorizing the annual budget of the provincial government of Marinduke for fiscal year twenty twenty three in the amount of one billion
six million
one billion six million three hundred nineteen thousand one hundred thirty eight pesos for the general fund proper in the and the amount of twelve million eight hundred ninety seven thousand six hundred eighty two pesos for the operation of the Marindukasan and Gravel Economic Enterprise or MSG EE covering the various expenditures for the operation of the provincial government for the fiscal year twenty twenty three and appropriating the necessary funds therefore is now approved for the third and final reading other matters
Madam Presiding Officer that's all for the business for the reportion of today's session we don't have an assigned business
kung wala na po uh yes Honorable Leva
Madam Presiding Officer may I move for our the adjournment until next December sixteen ten AM at the SV session parang di ba dito ng
dito maga-meeting session
dito na
dito maga-session
at the SVP session hall
okay the session is adjourned by by the next session uh maybe we can allow a more relaxed attire uh for our session on the sixteenth the session is adjourned until Friday